Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. We're getting ready for a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. For today, Tuesday, February 11th, 2003. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public. We invite you to join us. For those of you unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. Council meetings can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Bernsen, Glentor, Garcetti, Grill, Hahn, Holden, Labonch, Misakowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, Sign, Padilla, 10 members present in the court, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Before beginning with the matters appearing on today's agenda, this being Tuesday and the first meeting of the week, we do have scheduled both a salute to the flag and a moment of inspiration. To introduce our guest, let me recognize the Councilmember of the 9th District, Councilmember Jan Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I have a very special lady here today, and she will lead us in our moment of inspiration. This is Angela Harris, and she is here today to sing a song entitled "Tight Rope", an inspirational piece that she wrote herself. She is originally from Ohio and has been a resident of one of the Skid Row Housing Trust buildings in downtown Los Angeles. She started as a volunteer intern six months ago and then was transitioned into employment with the Skid Row Housing Trust. Currently, she is an administrative assistant at 619 East 5th Street at the service spot for Skid Row Housing Trust, helping the staff with supply orders and event planning. Her songs lift the spirits of her coworkers and her community, and I'm very happy to present Angela to you today so that she can share her gifts with all of us. As she likes to say, she's a Skid Row sister, and I know her words and her harmony will inspire all of us. And so I'd like to present to you Angela Harris to lead us in the flag salute and then her song.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States, which is of America, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I don't wanna fall in love. It's too much pain, it's too complicated. But who can live a life making every choice belated? Between a safety net and a chance with you I cowardly stay. I think I'll just carefully walk this tightrope until I no longer care. See, I know I'm running out of time. There's no need to remind me. I've got to make a choice and place my fears behind me. I just don't wanna be hurt again, placing my heart in the hands of my mind. Tell me, how can I survive if I fall while crossing the line? For so long, my comfort zone is the only life I've known. And I know it's wrong, I know it's wrong, but life on the tightrope had become my home. And I guess I'll just reason with my senses and I'll slowly let down my defenses. 'Cause suddenly it all seems so senseless, and I don't want, I don't wanna go insane. But how can I endure the pain of finding that you're playing games? And I don't mean to complain, no, but tell me, how can I be sure you won't walk out the door and leave me in the pouring rain? Oh, and leave me in the pouring rain.
Thank you very much, colleagues, and I just want to say this is a kind of talent that we produce here in this, from the Skid Row community. She's just one of many talented people from the Skid Row community, so thanks for allowing us to present Angela to you today. And thank you, Don Garza, for being vigilant and reminding us, or reminding me every day, at least five times a day, that Skid Row cares to. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Perry moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Holden moves, and Ms. Misakowski seconds.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items that have been requested to be continued. Item number one, a request from Councilmember Hahn to continue that matter for 30 days to March 14th.
Members request to continue item number one by the 15th Council District. Is there any objection to that? Seeing none, item one shall be continued.
Also, a request to continue item number 21 to Friday, which is February 14th.
Members request to continue item number 21. Next Tuesday, I have a request in for this Friday. If, okay. Next Tuesday, then, is February 18th. That'll be the new hearing date for item 21, without objection.
Mr. President?
Mr. Holden?
One through 21, is that correct?
We're continuing item number 21.
Oh, all right. So I was, did this include, I didn't hear your first call. Does this include 18, 19, 20?
We're not calling specials yet, Mr. Holden.
I would have called them special when you get to them.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Next item for continuance, item number 40, request on behalf of Councilmember Padilla to continue that matter for one day to February 12th.
Members request to continue item number 40. Madam Clerk, which item is that?
That is a motion. It's a-
You're right, for one day, till tomorrow.
For one day.
Members, without objection, item 40 is continued.
And there are confirmations of city officials. Do you wish to take those matters up first?
Let's take those matters first. There was a request on one of the city officials for that matter, item number 21. We have continued. Okay, other city officials, please.
Item number nine is confirmation of Mr. An Trong to the Quality and Productivity Commission. It's an audits and governmental committee report. Public hearing has been held in the committee.
Okay, if you can come forward at this time. Members, public hearing haven't been held. Please take a seat. Has been held on this item. Are there members wishing to pose any questions or comments at this time? Seeing none, believe we're ready for a vote. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item number 10 is confirmation of Mr. Bradley H. Midland to the City Planning Commission. It's a Planning Line Use Management Committee report, and a hearing has been held in committee.
Okay, thank you for being here, Mr. Midland. Public hearing has been held in committee, but we do have members wishing to be heard. Let's begin with Mr. Weiss, followed by Mr. Zine, and Mr. Garcetti, and Mr. Reyes. Mr. Weiss.
I defer to the chair of the committee, who I thought had pushed this button.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Councilmember Weiss. First, I just want to thank Mr. Midland. He did come before committee. The full committee was there. My understanding, if the city clerk can correct me, because there's only one signature on the report, I have to verbalize the motion.
Yes, the motion is required.
Okay, so I'd like to make the motion to appoint Mr. Midland to the Planning Commission. I just want to take this opportunity to thank him for his good work, and look forward to working with you as we go through our cases in our city. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Midland, congratulations to you. I think you're gonna win this vote.
I think you're going to win this vote, and this is going to be, hopefully, the first of many easy votes for you in your life as a commissioner, although there are going to be some tough ones, because the city faces so many challenges. The city faces this incredible pressure to keep growing, and yet we have countervailing pressures from communities. Your background as an attorney in the private sector uniquely qualifies you to deal with these pressures and to fairly weigh the balance, weigh the equities, balance the equities, and make really good public policy. You're going to be aided in this by a really strong commission that you'll be serving on, and by the fact that the committee that will oversee the actions of your commission headed by Mr. Reyes is also a very strong, good public policy committee. So you are a welcome addition to this team, and on behalf of myself and my office, we very much look forward to your service and to working with you. Good luck, Mr. Midland.
Thank you for your votes and confidence.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning to you, Riley. Just want to offer my congratulations. I know your dedication to the community and all the wonderful things you've done, all the wonderful groups you work with, and you've supported in any and all ways possible. This is one more task, one more aspect of your life that you'll devote to the city of Los Angeles. It's a very, very important position as that planning takes place throughout the city of Los Angeles for development, et cetera. I know you're qualified beyond the qualifications and your commitment, your dedication. I want to offer my personal congratulations and wish you well as you spend many, many more hours over the issues that'll come before you. Congratulations to you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and congratulations, Brad. I know I was one of a number of voices, no doubt, that urged the mayor to keep you on as a commissioner, and glad to see that not only are you being kept on as a commissioner, but elevated to one of the most important commissions, and want to congratulate you. And I could certainly echo what was said in terms of your own activism, Jewish community and the community at large, and the great things you've done. But we won't let you off that table without one question. So I urge all my colleagues to support Mr. Midland, but I'm curious to know how you think we can even, we've taken some great steps in involving neighborhoods in planning decisions, and obviously, it's probably a thing that neighborhoods care the most about. What more can we do to involve neighborhood councils in the planning process, and what can you do as a commissioner to encourage that?
I think that the most important things that we have to feel with the commission and the planning is a term that I use that's called smart growth. L.A. will be growing, we cannot stop the population, but we have to use smart growth and do what works for the people, the community, and for the betterment of everybody in the city. So that's the best way I could answer that, is just smart growth.
Other members? Seeing none, we are prepared for a vote. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And thank you too for your service. Both items nine and 10 forthwith, please.
And item number 45 is also a confirmation of Terrence J. Manning to the Emergency Preparedness Commission. This is a communication from the chair and member of Public Safety Committee. Public hearing has not been held.
Okay, and I do not have requests from members of the public to be heard on this item. Is our nominee with us today? Please have a seat. Thank you for being here. Members wishing to be heard on item 45, Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a very, very commendable recommendation. Chief Manning has had experience in the department in emergency preparedness and is well, well-equipped to fill the shoes of the chief who is retiring, and I was very happy to recommend this. I think Mr. Zine was there as well, but it wasn't a full committee, so with the recommendation of both of us, we move this confirmation of the appointment.
Okay. Other members wishing to be heard on item 45, Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. You have a long history, your family tradition of fire services in the city of Los Angeles. When did that start?
1955.
1955. It's been one continual stream, correct?
Certainly has, yes. Yeah, the year I was born.
Pardon me?
Yeah, from the year I was born, a family member started with service to the city.
And other members of your family involved in that also, I understand?
Yes. My mother's Los Angeles City schoolteacher for 25 years, and my brother is also a Los Angeles City Fire Chief.
And then your dad.
And certainly my father.
Right. So you grew up in this environment to see public safety, and you dedicated your life to public safety. And as we see what's confronting us in this world of hostility, the fire service, the EMS, is so essential, so critical, and as we have homeland security expanding and those different disciplines expanding to work in cooperation with law enforcement and Operation Nighthawks and these other activities that we do, it's a critical function that you're going to be assuming. And I know that the responsibility is going to be on your shoulders, the accountability is on your shoulders, and I just want to wish you well in it, because with all the things you've got to do, there's just one more aspect of public safety, and again, that long tradition of your family history providing that to the people of Los Angeles. So wish you congratulations, and I know you can do well with that, and I'm sure your family is extremely proud of this new assignment that you're going to get, which is critical in our time of uncertainty in our city and our society. So congratulations to you.
Thank you very much.
Other members wishing to be heard on item 45? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Next items.
Next items, Mr. President, items noticed for public hearings. Items two, three, and four are hearings on street lighting districts, and there are ordinances on the files.
Members, items two, three, and four are now before us. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. We shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Members wishing to call any specials? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, as opposed to taking a vote now, I do believe we expect 12 members today. Let's hold these ordinances on the desk as we await the arrival of another member, and we'll take 12 votes on these items.
Next items, then, Mr. President, items five, six, and seven are also public hearing items, and council should open the hearing and continue the hearing and ordinance to March 4th, and I believe there is a card on item number five.
We do have a card on item number five. Let's call that special. On items six and seven, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these matters today, so we shall open the public hearings and, without objection, continue them to March 4th. Ms. Hahn.
Mr. President, I would just like to receive and file item eight.
Okay, and that's the next item for consideration. Item number eight now before us. We have a request from Ms. Hahn to receive and file this item. We do not have speaker cards on item number eight. Is there any objection to receiving and filing item number eight? Seeing none, item eight is received and filed. Madam Clerk.
Next items, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have been held, items 11 through 24. There is an ordinance on item number 11.
Let's hold item 11 on the desk, awaiting a 12th member, leaving items 12 through 24 with the exception of 21, which has been continued. Members, any specials? Ms. Gruel.
Item 18 and 19, please.
18 and 19 call special by Ms. Gruel. Any other specials? Mr. Holden.
15, I would respectfully request that it go to Environment, Quality, and Waste Management Committee.
Members request to refer item 15 back to the Environmental Quality Committee. Is there any objection? Seeing none, item 15 is so referred.
And, Mr. President, item 20 special.
Item 20 call special by Mr. Holden. Any other specials? Mr. Labange? Any other specials?
All right. 20, 24 up here, I mean, what was your call? Your call through what, up to?
Through item 24.
Through item 24, okay. Then item 24 special.
Item 24 call special by Mr. Holden. Seeing no other specials, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Next items, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have not been held, items 25 through 43.
And I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. We shall deem the public hearing satisfied. Members, any specials? Items 25 through 43. 42 call special by Mr. Zine.
Excuse me, Mr. President, on item number 25, that is an award of bids. Do you wish me to read the announcement of the winner of the bids and the true interest cost?
Let's take requests for specials on 26 through 43 first. Mr. Holden.
26 special.
26 call special by Mr. Holden. Mr. Garcetti.
Seven, please.
Which matter?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven?
Yeah.
Call special by Mr. Garcetti. We have a request to call item 35 special for an amending motion. Any other specials? Mr. Reyes.
Yes, item 38, we can continue that to February 21st for Councilman Pacheco.
Okay, members request to continue item 38 to February 21st, without objection, so ordered. Any other specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of items 27 through 43. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Bringing us back to item number 25, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President. This morning, bid was open, or bids were open in the city administrative officers' office, and the winner of the bid was Merrill Lynch &amp; Company, and this is a ward-of-sale of water system subordinate revenue bonds refunding series and wastewater system revenue bonds for the par amount of $358,815,000 and a true interest cost of 4.796,365%. And a resolution is also attached.
Okay, Mr. Weiss moves. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 25. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
On the supplemental agenda, item number 44 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Members, item 44 now before us. Ms. Perry calls that matter special. We have held public hearing on item 44. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearing. Next item, please.
Going back to the items called special, item number five was called special for cards from the public.
Item number five now before us, and the council calls forward Toby Mazzi at this Toby Mazzi, are you with us? Item number five.
Hello, my name is Toby Mazzi, and I'm a property owner along Baker Street and Spring Street, and we, in regards to the street lamps, we, I have a petitions from the majority of the property owners right there, and there's only about five buildings that concern this issue. And we're for the streetlights, but we would like the vintage-looking streetlights installed. So I'm kind of unsure as what to do. If we, as property owners, vote this down, do we lose our funding for that? And does that mean that we'll never get streetlights in there unless we pay for the installation ourself? As it is now, the installation, from what I understand, is going to be paid for by the Gold Line or MTA, and the property owners will then pay for the yearly assessment. So I'm asking for some advice here on how to perhaps handle this issue. I know that it's in Mr. Reyes's district, so maybe he could give me some advice on that.
Maybe Mr. Reyes's staff? Ed? Ed?
Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Holden, can you give Mr. Reyes some breathing room here?
I'm Toby Mazzi, and my own property along Baker Street, and I believe I sent your office a letter regarding the streetlight issue there, where I have all the, the majority of the property owners have signed a petition that we want the vintage-looking ornate streetlights, because we feel it's kind of a historical-looking area there. Some of the buildings dating, you know, from 1890, so...
Right. No, I understand it's a very historic place. Actually, that's where the struggle for women's right to vote began, in one of those buildings.
Yeah, the, well, the Women's Building, which has some historical significance.
One of the key issues there is working with the Bureau of Street Lighting to start an assessment process. We have what the budget calls out for, which are the basic model of lights. We want to do improvements that are vintage, perhaps some characteristics. We need to work with you to begin that process for that incremental increase in cost for different lights. So that's something we will be engaging you with.
But now, from my understanding, we, as property owners, have to have our ballots in today to approve or disapprove of the streetlights as specified on that ballot. And that, those specified are the modern freeway-looking ones, if you will.
Right.
So I just don't, do we need to vote this down? Because we can vote that down today.
Mr. Mazzi.
Do me a favor, if we can get together inside here, we can take care of that detail with my staff.
Okay.
Mr. Mazzi, thank you for being here. Let me close public comment, and we'll hold this matter on the desk, allowing you the opportunity to meet with staff representatives of the First Council District. Madam Clerk, let's proceed to the next item.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 18 was called special by Councilmember Gruel.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have before us the item relative to the housing trust fund, and I want to thank, at this point, my colleagues who have worked so carefully in addressing the affordable housing, Mr. Garcetti and Ms. Hahn, Mr. Reyes, who serve on this committee. And we have looked at both the housing trust funds and looking also at item 19, which is relative to 46. I am really pleased that we are standing here today with a plan for our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, a plan that is going to allow us to have more funding for homeownership, for modernization, for rehabilitation, for the creation of more multifamily housing units. This housing trust fund, in cooperation with the mayor's office and Sarah Dussault, who is here, have really, we have accomplished a lot. And I want to thank all the advisory board members. I don't see them here today, but they have been here at all of our meetings. We've had several public hearings that were held out in the community, both in Mr. Garcetti's district and my district. The advisory committee spent several months coming up with recommendations. This is going to be a roadmap for how we can address the issue of affordable housing here in Los Angeles. We also know that there are a lot more things we need to do to accomplish that goal, to create more housing. But I also want to thank the Housing Department, who is going to implement this housing trust fund in our policies. We do have to roll up our sleeves and make sure we get these funds out as quickly as possible, which is our next item, number, item number 19, which allows us to be competitive on Proposition 46. So I just wanted to let everyone know that this has been an extraordinary accomplishment, an experience, that has been a partnership between both the public and the private sector and our constituents who participated in that process. So I'm asking for an I-vote, and again, want to thank my colleagues, many of who began this issue prior to me even being elected, who pushed hard for that housing trust fund. So I want to thank you all for that leadership as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, it used to be that with housing, there was an issue that people, A, really didn't care about in the city, and B, that people thought government didn't have a role in. Certainly, we had experiences when the federal government tried to build housing. We have some projects, Councilmember Hahn has them, and I think we've all accepted throughout the country that the government doesn't build housing very well. But what government does well is become a catalyst for making sure that there is housing at all levels, both the affordable part of the spectrum, as well as right through market rate and onto luxury housing. There's bad news out there. We have less than 3.5% vacancy rate in this city. 12% is what the rents are estimated to rise next year in this city. As things are getting worse and worse, we have had a historic coalition here that's come together. It's been business and labor and government and nonprofit sector together, saying we will come up with what is now going to be, and now is, and now will be spent out, as the largest per capita trust fund for affordable housing in the country. You all made this possible. You all made this possible. The mayor's office made this possible, and the warrior who leads the Housing and Community Development Committee, Wendy Gruel, made that possible. I was amazed to see, when we can barely get people sometimes at public hearings, to see how many people showed up at those two public hearings, and how important it is in poll after poll over the last few years to residents of Los Angeles that we solve the housing crisis. This is just the first step, but it's a great first step. I want to say one thing technically, too. I know that there's been some questions about the funding, and we've asked the mayor's office to report back. We have one concern with the CRA part of the funding, to make sure that we establish for the record right now that money isn't taken from one project area and pooled right now without the approval of those council members or without some finding of benefit to other areas. And I... And I want to underscore that as we look at how we do the funding, because I think there are council members who have things underway, or the negotiations and thoughts for housing underway, and this would kind of throw a bit of a curveball into the mix. So as we get that report back, I'm sure we can work that out. But congratulations to the mayor for stepping up on this and being such a leader. Congratulations to all the members of the committee as well. This is really an amazing day, I think, as Janice Hahn put it in committee. To get to the point where we're actually talking about not whether we'll get the money, or if we'll get the money, but how we're actually going to spend it is a really exciting day in Los Angeles. Congratulations to all of you.
Mr. Holden.
As President, members, it's clear here that we need this program in place. When you see that there are 372,000 overcrowded units in the city of Los Angeles, I think what we didn't say in this report is that where are those houses most needed? You're going to find that, once the program is in place, then the competition is going to, going to start. On item number 19, you have houses, and you, we use tax credits. We use that program. If this money in item 18 is used as a leverage to help fund or come up with the best plan for affordable housing, then we should have some priority areas whereby we would use these funds in order to provide for affordable housing. Some areas, as you will discover, do not want low and low and low-medium, or whatever the case may be, housing in their districts. And it becomes nothing more than a slogan. Then the question is, where can we put them, and how quickly can we get them there, and where are they most needed? I think that when you bring a report like this to us, and as I commend the mayor for funding it, that we should talk about the area, or the areas where we can put these houses. We should establish their priority right now up front, so there would be no, no question about it, where the tax credit programs or plans that we subsequently vote on should go. So it's a good program, but please keep that in mind, that you want to, I would trust that you would initiate that kind of an effort, rather than have me put a motion in to say, "All right, now we have programs of 18 and 19. Where do we start?" I would trust you would do that. Right, Ms. Gruel? All right, thank you.
Mr. Labance.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning again. Wonderful words by all my colleagues, 1, 2, 3, 4. And I think I want to call on Ed Reyes, though, just to say that this is, just fits in what Ed's doing as our Chair of Land Use in our discussions about now, where do we push the housing? I think it's a wonderful, wonderful opportunity that we have to take charge of what Mr. Holden just spoke of, as far as where we're going to do it. You know, we just spent $4.2 billion on a subway system from North Hollywood to the central part of the city, and that corridor has to be looked at. We just are going to be spending a cross-valley busway, and that corridor has to be looked at. The Blue Line to Long Beach in the areas of Los Angeles, that corridor has to be looked at, because the closer you are to transit, the easier it is to enjoy and love Los Angeles, because you don't have the hassle of the extra commute, which is so important. So I just wanted to tag that in, because so often Chairman Reyes speaks about the need to do good land use planning, and with this advancement, Councilmember Gruel and your efforts and Mr. Garcetti's, is this opportunity now to try to create that, to focus that, to push that, to create the opportunity for those to live in housing, and make sure that our departments are prepared to work diligently with the agencies and organizations that are building housing, so we really give them an encouragement so that they can get it done. It's so important to do that. So I just want to congratulate my colleagues. I have been not the advocate that you all have been in this area, but I'm certainly going to be there for all of us, for all the people of Los Angeles, to create the housing of the future. Congratulations to all those who spent all the time on it. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Tom. I just want to take this opportunity to thank the mayor's office and all their hard work, the department, for their due diligence and working with us, and Councilmember Gruel in the marathon sessions we were having to get these policies out. And it's been very trying, but it's very well worth it. When you look at some of the basic statistics here, a single full-time worker in Los Angeles needs to earn $21.15 to afford an average apartment. Yet we know that more than 60 percent of the city's residents are renters, more than 60 percent. In District 1, 85 percent of the district are renting. So we look at the issue of density, the citywide population density averages 7,600 per square mile. When we look at CD1, for example, including Highland Park, Cypress Park, Lincoln Heights, and Pico Union, Westlake, we're looking at 20,000 residents per square mile. So the obvious message here is that there's a real congestion in the market. There is not enough of a housing stock out there to allow for a range of housing to be accessible to the person who is at the low, very low income stratum, let alone the folks who are working even in the city, in management, that can even afford to rent in the city of Los Angeles. So we are in dire straits. I keep encouraging the department that we need to put together the kinds of systems that are very, very constructive, effective, when we were operating after the earthquake hit. And believe me, the kind of experience, a dire need that we have in our communities, it is as if an earthquake has hit. That's the kind of need we have, and that's the kind of due diligence we should be getting from our departments. We're there to support you. We're there to work with the mayor's office, and again, thank Councilmember Gruel for her great work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we're prepared for a vote. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Item 18 is approved. Next item, please.
Next items, Mr. President, there are 12 council members present. Do you wish to take up the ordinances that were being held on the desk?
Let's take one vote on all ordinances before us.
That would be 2, 3, 4, 11, and 27. 26 is an ordinance, however, that was called special by Councilmember Holden.
Okay. All ordinances not called special. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Ms. Perry, did you wish to be recognized?
Take, if I may, I request that item 44 be taken out of order, and I wanted to introduce an amendment to a motion that's already on the desk. And it's on Peoples', it's been distributed already.
Members, is there an objection to taking item 44 out of order? Seeing none, let's take up item 44 next. Ms. Perry, is this amendment technical in nature?
Yeah, well, actually, it's substantive.
You have the floor.
The outcome would be that, because of the reasons listed in the text of the motion and concerns raised about the bidding process, I would ask that we require the CAO to review the bidding process in this case and report back to council in two weeks with recommendations because of the impacts that this process has had on council districts 8, 9, and 10.
Okay. Any discussion on the amending motion? Mr. Weiss.
I'd like to ask Mr. Deaton and the city attorney to come to the table. I will, I will say that what carries the greatest amount of weight here is that I see that the representative from District 9 has submitted this motion, and I will take very seriously her request. Having said that, do you know, either of you know of any defects in the RFP process here? Please hold my time. No. No. Mr. Servantes, if you could please join us at the table. If I could ask the city attorney representative, could identify yourself and tell us if you know of any defects in the RFP process?
Kitty Reivers, Deputy City Attorney. No, I found no defects in the RFP process.
Have you looked at the RFP process here?
Yes.
Describe for us the work you've done and what your findings are.
I examined the fact that we advertised, as we normally do, and accepted bids from those who provided a bid, those who were not pleased with the process after it was evaluated and bidder was selected. We provided an appellate process. They appealed, and...
Can you pull the mic closer to your...
Yes. And after appeal, we found that there was nothing that would prohibit us from going forward as...
After an appeal, you said?
Yes.
There's been an appeal?
Yes, there was.
Who adjudicates the appeals?
Pardon?
How are the appeals adjudicated?
We had a panel of, I appeared, Mr. Servantes appeared, the Delta appeared with their representatives and presented their questions to the board.
Is that the normal process for review of contracts awarded through an RFP process in this type of area?
Yes, it is.
Is it customary and normal for the CAO to do a review of an RFP process in the manner proposed by Motion 44(c)?
No, it is not.
Do you know of when it's been done recently?
No, I do not.
Mr. Deaton, do you?
Oh, I...
No, Mr. Deaton, that's not fair. Mr. Deaton knows of everything. But tell us, Mr. Deaton, is it customary and normal to review an RFP process following a determination on appeal that we've just heard from the city attorney? Is it customary and normal for this council to send such a matter to a CAO for review?
In instances where members of the council have some concern over the process, it is not extraordinary. What happens is that the city government goes through the process, and this is on occasions when one or more council members have concern about the process, to have either my office or the city administrative office to do a review to see, was it appropriate or not, is not uncommon. Does, as an automatic review, quite frankly, that's all we would be doing.
I'm trying to grapple with what value added would there be from a CAO review process when what the city attorney has described seems rather exhaustive? Can someone please shed some light on that?
Well, a review of the city administrative office is always beneficial for all of...
I'm sure they appreciate your, your assessment, Mr. Deaton. And it's your assessment, as the city attorney's representative here, that the city has acted properly in this, in this regard. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
By the way, and I have no evidence to the contrary. I mean, I'm...
And none, and none has been proffered in this discussion, correct?
If you mean offered, that's...
Same.
I don't know that legal language, but nobody has suggested that, other than, other than the two council members who believe that there should be a review to ensure that there has been no problems.
I appreciate that. That's not where this began last week. It began with a discussion of trying to shift two contracts around without a basis, and now we're asked to go on a holding pattern. Is the CAO here? CAO representative here?
I think he's behind a column over there.
Hold my time, please. So, Mr. Fujioka, what's just been described is a bidding process that appears to the department, the city attorney, and the CLA to have been proper. An appellate process that the city attorney has described, which has found no improprieties and has reviewed the claims of the aggrieved party. There's a motion pending before the council now for your office to do a review. What value, in all honesty, in all candor, can you really add to this process?
I haven't been personally involved in, in this, in this RFP and this selection process, so I can't, as a consequence, I can't personally attest to whether or not there are problems or there's the absence of problems. And so having our office review the process, I'm not sure it would cause any, any fundamental problems.
That's a question of what value is added.
Well, in all candor, we're frequently asked to provide a third-party perspective to a number of different processes, RFPs, anything of that sort. So we do, we have been asked to come in and provide our, our impartial objective assessment of a process.
Now, it's my recollection from committee that Ms. Fung from your office testified before my committee that she thought that, I mean, she recommended that my committee take the action it took.
Oh, I understand that.
So presumably, and Ms. Fung's a good employee of your office, correct?
She's an outstanding employee.
So, and I haven't seen an occasion where she's made a recommendation to my committee, which was in error.
I'm just saying, I haven't even, I think she's in the audience. I haven't talked to her about this one, this one particular issue, but...
I don't want to put her on the spot.
I don't know if we have, do we have, I don't believe this is a time-sensitive issue, and so it's really, we can go either with review or stand with the committee's report. The review, I'm not sure it would, would add any, would take away from this process, but maybe would bring a higher degree of confidence in the process.
Well, perhaps, but I have, as I say, up until the moment I saw my colleague from the 9th district signature on this, I've had a lessened degree of confidence in the questioning that's been raised here. And I want to make sure that we, we only proceed down this path. If it's the right thing to do, if it's not the right thing to do, I'm going to vote no. Certainly want to hear, my colleague from the 9th district just pushed her button, and I certainly want to hear what she has to say.
Why don't we hear from Ms. Perry, as Yasev's motion next, and then have Ms. Misakowski and Mr. Holden.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. President. Back in 1999, I ran the census for the city of Los Angeles, and I think I have firsthand knowledge of how to reach out effectively to communicate information to various monolingual, ethnic, and other types of communities. I think one problem that I've always had as a city employee is that the city tends to choose the same periodicals, the same newspapers over and over and over again, but from a practical perspective, for those of us who are elected officials, they don't always reach the communities that we are elected to serve, because if you look at statistics, for example, La Peñon, or a Spanish-language newspaper, which is a subsidiary of The Wave, I think you would find that in the South Los Angeles area, the actual subscriber or readership is quite low. It is also very low for, for example, for the Los Angeles Times. I think in my cursory review of the facts of the situation, that one of the newspapers which posted the information was Rafa Ximpo, which is a bilingual newspaper, but very focused, at least within the city of Los Angeles, in the Little Tokyo area. And I don't know how much of a response you got, but quite frankly, a lot of people that we serve don't, don't necessarily read newspapers. Now, we do a lot of outreach to the nonprofit community, and one of the models that I have always found to be very successful and effective is what the Community Development Department does, which is their NOFA list of Notice of Funds Availability, so that they have a direct pipeline and a direct relationship and are constantly updating their database. I myself have a problem pending with a response to an RFP process from another department, where they became angry with an executive director of a nonprofit in my district and decided that she shouldn't qualify the next time around. And, you know, I'm having a review done right now. So if constituents raise a concern to me, I feel obliged to share it with my colleagues to see if we can give some consideration. And again, like Mr. Fujioka says, the outcome may be that we build more confidence, and that's a good outcome. And I'm ready to vote whenever, if anybody else wants to give up their time, I'm ready to call the question.
Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Fujioka and those at the table, is this review going to be guided by the principles that we normally look at? That is, we've conducted an RFP process, we closed the process, we put it out to certain bidders, we got response, it was evaluated, as the city would normally do, by independent folks looking at this. Is that the sum total of your review? And ultimately, with whatever comes from that review, what are the options that will be brought back to us? One, that the process is solid, that there were no irregularities, that the bid should go forward as recommended? Or if you find anything, isn't the process, we throw out this process and start over? Or if you find anything, isn't the process, we throw out this process and start over? I mean, what, and so if you cancel those two questions, what is the range of what you would look at with this?
The focus, as you described, is accurate. That's what we would look at. And yes, we would either validate the RFP process or we'd recommend that we cancel and start all over again.
Okay, so, and so the only reason you're suggesting that this may have some validity at this time is to add potential further confidence, but it's within the framework of the process that was conducted, that all the i's were dotted and t's were crossed. And when we have had issues in the past, and, Mr. Weiss, we have, but it's been where there is a challenge by one party or another, that there were irregularities, that perhaps the proposals weren't as thorough and didn't meet the letter of the requirement, that there was undue influence, et cetera. There are those kinds of issues that in the past, in other kinds of awards for contractor awards of a project, that were raised and very often the city attorney stepped in. So in this instance, the city attorney has looked at and felt it was fine. CDD looked at it and felt it was fine. And it's a third-level review is now being asked by the CAO to come back in two weeks, look at those issues as we would normally look at in an RFP process to make sure that there were not irregularities and that the process followed everything we asked of it.
Yes, that's true. And at one point, I did have a chance to talk to Ms. Fung. And at this point, based on input, she felt that the process was fine. And at this juncture, that is the position of our office, but an additional review can strengthen that validation.
And was she able to confirm, or are you and those at the table able to confirm that there is not a time sensitivity to this? In other words, two weeks--
I don't believe there's a time--
Well, actually, there would be a time-sensitive issue in that there are two other contracts that are waiting to execute. Otherwise, we do not have funding for them. If we're going to delay these contracts right now, or the decision right now to have it referred by the CAO's office, then we're going to have to ask council approval for us to execute contracts, at least for one month, for the existing three service providers.
So we're talking about two weeks here?
Two weeks. Well, we're beyond that timeframe right now. So we're beyond any kind of contract--
So it already is time-sensitive?
Yes, it is, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
And if I may, Councilwoman, the department, it feels that it conducted a fair and equitable process, and we followed the same RFP process that we've, that's been considered standard for the city and approved by the CAO's office and CLA's office for a number of years. So we stand behind our process.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, two weeks won't make a difference. Ms. Perry is involved, and she knows she's more involved in this now than last week. When you look at the response to the RFP, it amounts to being sole source, whether the department would like to accept that or not. In fact, one of the organizations that prevail, MAOF, was informed, informed my office, that they were not even notified of the other RFPs that served the other areas. The information was not widely, was not disseminated to those departments, I mean, to those organizations that could perform those kinds of services, not until, except in this one organization that relates to Delta. I think if you want to make sure that everything was done above board, and I think that's what we want to do as a city, that it should be done by the CAO, and this case has been done in cases before. We should not rush to judgment when there are some apparent problems associated with the process. This is a sole source. Look at the other areas. How many responded to the harbor? How many responded to the areas for 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 11, 12, 13, 14 council districts? How many responded to those areas?
We went out to RFP for three areas.
How many responded?
And we received, we received one proposal for each of those two and two for yours.
And you, and those are the ones who are there. The information was not widely disseminated. And also, when you look and see the areas that they serve, they say CDBG, funds allocated by council district. For all those council areas, nothing in this report suggests that they are specifying exactly where the money will be spent per council district. This is something that you should really want to look at. I mean, I understand how you feel very strongly. You are as emotional as I am, but you are a public servant as I am. And what you really want is the truth to rise to the top, just like any cream. And that's what we're looking for. If there's a shadow of doubt, your position should be as mine. Check it out. And I would support Ms. Perry's motion and ask you to support it also respectfully.
Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Council President. You know, when we look at issues of need in a city, there's need everywhere. And we look at formulas and how they've been distributing resources. I just want to put forth for my colleagues, and first understand the timeframe issue. But my point being here is that if we look at the SEPA 2, 3, and 5, that's rent allotted and restricted to 8, 9, 10, through a motion that was passed three years ago, the allotment by district is not very proportionate. Because we look at SEPA's 1, 3, 4, and 5, all these council offices have to split up $260,000. That brings down the allotment even lower per district. So if we're going to take this discussion to that point of being equal, let's really do that. And I'd like to do a friendly motion that speaks to looking at the total amount and let each council district be able to have access to a proportionate amount of what's left of the pie. So that is a friendly motion. But my question will, a concern I have is the timeframe. Can we realot proportionate to the districts so that we do have a fair playing field, if you will?
Yes, we can, Councilman. We can actually allocate the funds across the 15 council districts via the SEPA's. We'd certainly do that.
So as you see, councilmembers, it's kind of confusing, but CDs, districts 1 through 5 will get $23,680. Districts 6, 7, 11, 15 will get, will split up $23,679. Then CD 8, CD 9, CD 10 will be able to split up $86,000 each in each district. So again, it's just an issue of a level playing field if we're going to go into this road, down this road. Thank you.
Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. Reyes, I very much appreciate what you just said. And I would make the following suggestion to you, friendly suggestion, which is, I do not want your policy proposal, which looks at how all of these funds are allocated globally, to get caught up in the hurly-burly of whether or not we approve this particular amended 44C. So if you make that motion by way of a formal motion, I will second it so it can come to my committee and we can have a discussion with AGING. And I imagine AGING would like to have a discussion about making sure that we allocate these funds in the most equitable manner, right?
Certainly.
And if there is inequity that's been built into the system, I will help you change it in my committee. I don't want people to have to think they have to vote for this to do the good you're trying to do. I have seen, so I just want you to understand that I, that, you want to say something? Go ahead.
Yeah. If we can fold it in today, it'll create a even playing field today. I don't understand why we would need to wait. If we had another year, that means--
Well, let's separate the questions and do your thing--
Okay, that's my, that's a friendly motion.
Let's, because I'll vote, I'll vote, I'll support you on what you're asking. If we can separate it out, I don't see any, I just want you to know, and I really respect the fact that my friend from the Ninth District put this forward today, without evidence. And with Ms. Fung's representation before the committee, with Mr. Cervantes and the department's representations, with Mr. Deaton's representations before us last week, Mr. Deaton's representations today, with the city attorney's representations today, and with Mr. Fujioka's game efforts here today. But a bottom line that I think we all did understand, I don't see a basis to do this. And I think we need to be fair to those very needy people out there who are counting on this money, who are counting on it being provided in a fair manner. And we all know if we could double the amount of money we would provide for elderly services in this, if there were a way to do this, if there were a way to make every provider happy, we would do it. Public resources are limited. This is an improper use of public resources, in my view, to try to take this extra delay. And Mr. Cervantes has spoken to the fact that this is a time-sensitive proposal. I will vote no.
Mr. Labange?
Mr. President, I call for the previous question.
And you are the final speaker on the queue. This ends the discussion. Madam Clerk, the motion before us, please.
You have Councilmember Reyes's motion to divide or allot the dollars in the, within the SEPA's proportionately between the council districts.
Before we consider this, Mr. Deaton, Mr. Fujioka?
That particular motion would change, I believe, the process. I think that's, and I think city attorney can advise, but I believe there are, what is in the RFP process is contracts for specific dollar amounts in specific areas. And that could very well change those dollar amounts in those contracts. And, and if you, so, that motion, I think, would substant-- well, you can go to committee, but once the contracts are signed, it's a year from now before you--
Mr. Deaton, bottom line is you're recommending, for a number of reasons, to not separate.
Well--
As Mr. Reyes has--
Point of order. I think what Mr. Deaton is saying, correct me if I'm wrong, that the only way we can achieve with this contract, this approval right now, what Mr. Reyes wants to achieve is to reject the bids, go back to CDD, AGING, start over, come in with the process under SEPA under a more even, across-the-board allocation of funds. That's the only way, it would really be not an amendment, but to reject this, not study it, and start over. The question is, do we want to do that now with this contract over this year or approve the contract over this year and send your motion to committee for next year?
Mr. Reyes?
Staff, can we do the realotment? And not jeopardize our timeframes in absorbing our dollars as contracted with the federal government?
Twofold. If you're going to go out and realign the funding amount that we're talking about going to RFP, we're coming up to the end of the program year. So you're talking, going into a new program year. It'd be my recommendation, Councilman, if you do want to look at realignment of the funding, that we go with the contract this year and give the instructions for the department to work with the CAO's office, CLA's office, to analyze the allotment of monies. And then prior to any further contract in the ensuing fiscal years, because there's going to be three options, then at that point, we come before the council with the recommendations to realot, realot monies to those three contractors, whoever they may be.
My intention is not to hurt anyone out there who's expecting a service from this program. If we're going to be doing that, I'd rather follow your recommendation to make sure we do this properly--
Correct.
--and not hurt the delivery of service.
Certainly. Because right now, it's a great idea, Councilman. It's just a matter of, we're up against the end of a program year, and then going into a new program, it's very difficult for the department comptroller's office to be able to conduct that kind of assessment, do the RFP in a timely manner.
Mr. Reyes, do you therefore wish to move realotment in future program years as opposed to the existing year?
If that is what it takes to get it done, yes.
Okay, that's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that, and we will hear that in my committee forthwith, Mr. Reyes, and work on that with you.
So that's an amended Reyes motion, seconded by Mr. Weiss. That is the matter before us. First, Madam Clerk, please open the roll.
On Reyes's motion, and then the, do you wish to refer that then to your committee?
Well, Mr. Holden, please listen. Mr. Holden, please listen. You'll follow with us. Mr. Reyes has amended his motion to pursue the realotment for future program years.
Well, he can vote yes on that.
Well, that's what we're about to do.
Yeah, but we also--
Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now the next motion before us, Madam Clerk.
The next motion, then, is 44C, which is Councilmember Perry's motion to instruct the CAO to investigate the bidding process and report back to the council in two weeks. And then that would be then continuing the balance of it, and then to have the whole item again back on February 25th.
So the balance of the item remains at the council level or is referred back to committee?
Right.
Ms. Perry?
It's fine, refer it back to committee.
Okay.
You want it to come to committee or come to council?
Bring it back to council, that's better, just to bring it--
Bring it to council.
Bring it back to council? Yeah, fine. Okay, we're voting no. Yeah, bring it back to council, fine. If he's going to vote no anyway, bring it back to council.
All right.
Okay, is that clear to everybody?
It is clear.
Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, three noes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 19 was called special by Councilmember Gruhl.
Ms. Gruhl?
Thank you, colleagues. We briefly touched on this item when we were discussing item number 18. Proposition 46 was passed by the voters in November, which gives us a unique opportunity, again, to build more housing in the city of Los Angeles and across the state. And to ensure that we are as competitive as possible, our housing department, working closely with the mayor's office, came up with a plan which allows us, and it is consistent with our housing trust fund, to get these funds immediately on the street and to be the most competitive. And so I would just move that we have an aye vote on this item today. We will be coming back with the various projects, but appreciate everyone's vote so we can be most competitive here in Los Angeles.
Thank you, Ms. Gruhl. Other members wishing to be heard on item 19. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 20 called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden, item 20. May I ask you to press your button, please?
Members, I think that we can have a little report on this. Just for information only, I plan to vote for it.
Mr. President and staff here to answer Mr. Holden's questions. Department staff. Department staff going once. Department staff going twice.
You can hold it over.
The mayor's office should be present. Mr. Brown. CDD.
We have two options, Mr. Holden. Either keep this on the desk, see if we can get staff here today, or we can continue this matter to tomorrow.
Wait, we have, we have representative from CDD. And while he's walking up here, could we ask for items number 18 and 19 to go forthwith?
Forthwith on 18 and 19.
Edward Baker with the Community Development Department. The recommendations that you have before you is for the utilization of the mayor's formerly known as UDAG funds. This is program income that can be used for a variety of purposes. And this is the mayor's office proposal that has been heard by committee and is now before the council for approval.
My question is, are we talking about $2.7 million? You're giving this to various organizations. For the public interest and concern, you might want to just say what they are and why you're doing, why the money's been allocated for these organizations.
I don't have the item before me right now. If you could hold on for just a second, I get a copy of it.
Very good. I just see one right here, the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce under Free Cash for College. It's a really good program. And I think that the public should know that their money is being well-spent by the mayor's office, and that's why I call this special, is for information only to the public. They know these, they'll learn from your discussion that these programs exist, and they may be able to benefit from some of these programs. For us to just pass A through Z, whatever, it may not help us that much.
And the recommendation is, in total, 17 different proposed projects allocated by the mayor's office. The first is a Bellevue Park Master Plan for $50,000 California Youth Theater, Echo Park, Alision Valley, Bridges 2 Intervention Team, EDA matching funds in the Cornfields Project, Free Cash for College, LA's Best, the program in the, in the schools, Laurel Plaza Evening Farmers Market, some consulting services from Mark Bridgues and Associates to help us prepare applications for federal funds, the Marlton Square Project, Neighborhood Legal Services. The PACE program will be receiving supplemental funding in this, in the mayor's UDAG. The search to involve Filipino-Americans, St. Elizabeth Catholic Church-- search to involve Filipino-Americans, St. Elizabeth Catholic Church, UCLA Anderson School, Valley Economic Development Corporation, Vermont's Lawson Retail Center, the Women's Care Cottage, and then a few late additions. Which aren't reflected in my notes here.
The Marlton Square Project, a million dollars?
Correct. That was a part of a previously approved Marlton Square Project.
Is that project going to go? That's an eighth district, right?
Correct. The two, the three additional projects are Chinatown Service Center, Harbor Area Gap, and the Teen Post Program.
Okay, I just thought it was interesting that, to make this information known to the public, in fact, I'm learning something as well. And we perhaps, like LA Best, some people don't even know what that is. You have the Bridges, LA Bridges, they don't know what that is. I won't belabor the point, but I think it would've been good to say, here's what LA Bridges is about, here's what this LA Best is about, so they'll know what they're spending the money on, on this $3.909 million. Okay, I have no further, or 4.9.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Ms. Hahn.
Well, I just wanted to take this opportunity to just follow up on Councilman Holden's, and you're right, the public does deserve to know where this money is going. And I want to say that I'm pleased that the mayor has allocated $100,000 in this to go to the gang alternative program, which will be trying to prevent kids from joining gangs in the first place. And we've got a major effort in the city to combat gang violence. We've really had a crackdown on gangs, but I think this shows real vision, that maybe the only way we really win this war is to grow up another generation of kids all over Los Angeles that will choose not to join gangs in the first place. And I think this is going to be dollars really well-spent. So I really want to thank the mayor for having vision in that area.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Other members? Mr. Holden, for a second.
This legal services, Neighborhood Legal Services, $90,000. What do they do? Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Neighborhood Legal Services provides assistance to individuals who many times don't have representation, whether it be in a housing issue, some discrimination issues, et cetera. And they, in fact, have, they're originally established in the San Fernando Valley and now have expanded their efforts to greater parts of all Los Angeles.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Very good organization. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 24 called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden, your button, please.
We have a report here as well, is needed. There's some driveways in my district that were damaged, and we want to know whether or not this will take care of those driveways.
Mr. Holden, are we waiting for staff here?
Bill Robertson, Bureau of Street Services. Councilman Holden, could you repeat the question again, please?
There's some driveways damaged, I think, when you're doing some resurfacing in the area, and they were not repaired, yet complaints were made, or how are you responding to that?
If the driveways were damaged by our resurfacing project, we will need the repairs, Councilman Holden. And if you would give me those locations, I will kindly check on those for you and give you an update.
Right, this is on Longwood, 1011 Longwood Avenue in my district. Ms. Armstead, and they've been complaining to the office about the damage that they caused. Would you look into that for us?
Yes, I would.
As we approve this project. I thank you, Mr. President, that was my concern.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President, members. I think, and I hope you focus on this, and focus on this all the time, our bureau has been able to accelerate and do a more efficient job because of techniques that they have used, and a lot of good things of recycling, a lot of things. Bill, give us just a brief overview as far as how you see what you have done, and the changes in the years that you, as now the director, you have seen.
I believe probably the biggest gains we've made in the resurfacing of our streets is our ability to accelerate the projects due to the types of equipment we've purchased over the last few years, our new profilers and our larger paving machines, the fact that five years ago, we went to a larger truck fleet that allows us to carry more asphalt material per truck trip, thus reducing our cost. And probably the key factor that we'll be celebrating very shortly is the opening of a new recycling plant out in the valley area, where we're reducing the cost of recycled asphalt to $19 a ton, as opposed to our previous contract, which was approximately $28 a ton.
Good. I just want to thank you for taking some of the suggestions in the audit. I know I happen to sit on both committees, Public Works, and also you're going to Public Works tomorrow, I believe, to report on some upgrades within the Street Services section. Members, I think it's real important that we look at ways to be very efficient with the dollar shrinking in the future, as we are in this particular budgetary crisis, how our street services performs, and how they perform at a higher degree. I also want to make one thing, a compliment on Crew 152. I like to talk about this publicly. On a Saturday, they showed up at 5:00 AM at Western and Hollywood Boulevard, and they grounded the street down on the same day. And then on Sunday, they paved it as beautiful as any paving could be done, from Western to Gower, and that type of efficiency deserves credit. And I think all the people of 152, and I know you do that around the city, but that was Hollywood Boulevard from Gower to Western Avenue. Additionally, I want you to get on Clyburn. Clyburn's out there on the edge, and Wendy Gruel's district and my district, and runs up anywhere, it edges with the city of Burbank. Some parts of Burbank are better than ours, some parts of Los Angeles are better than Burbank's. But I know, if you're making a special agreement, right, and you're doing this?
That's correct. We've made an agreement with the city of Burbank, and we'll be resurfacing actually Burbank's side of the street as well, as our side of the street.
And they'll be making a contribution, it'll all be done, but it's an efficient way to look at it, because some members at some streets that we boarder on, we half-patch it, and we want to clean that up to make it look nice for all residents. Thank you very much. Thank you for taking it here to the audit and the corrections that were requested, and your focus and leadership is managing the Bureau of Street Services, which covers the over 7,000 miles, hundreds and hundreds of public stairs, tunnels, and walkways in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you.
Mr. Holden, for a second time.
Mr. President, remember, I just want to echo, no, what Mr. Labange just said. You know, I came on the council 16 years ago. I've never seen our streets better than they are today. I mean, your department, in the most recent years, when there appeared, there's likely to be a pothole or something, you're always out there. And this is, this is slush, what do you call it? See what that you put in there? They just protect the surface that is already there. That's preventative for years to come, and the streets of Los Angeles are better than they ever were. And I mean, the public should be pleased about what we have done, done in the past recent years to maintain the streets. In my district, I'm sure, like, 80, 90% of the streets have been resurfaced, and some more than once in the past, oh, yeah, in the past 16 years. Well, because their main thoroughfare is like, they go up La Brea, and they go up Crenshaw, and they go down, it's like the center of the city, it's like, they're called the Centrex. You have to drive through the center of the city to get the east, the west, north, south, through the 10th district, so some of those streets take a real big beating. Thank you for the work you do there.
Thank you.
Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved.
Thank you.
Next item.
Item number 26 called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden, item 26, and your button, please.
Mr. President, members, we have a detective coming forward. Talk about this credit banking of sick time. Is that sick time or vacation time?
In 1993, the city passed an ordinance to allow officers to bank their vacation times or their compensatory time. So, since 93, the bank has grown tremendously. The bank is now over 100,000 hours, I think specifically about 102,000 hours. We just realized we have an officer that has 12 years on the job. He is severely ill with the later stages of cancer. The way the ordinance reads right now is that you must first go through your 100% time, let me back a little bit, the sick time.
100% time, then three-quarter time, and 50%.
And half-time, correct.
And then you can go into the bank.
That's correct.
Right. What you're asking us to do today is what?
When he reaches, when he gets to the 50% bank, to let the catastrophic bank supplement him 50%, so 50% from catastrophic bank and 50% from his sick leave, to allow him to get 100% pay.
Right. Mr. President, members, I understand the reports before us now, I'd like to do a verbal amendment, where these police officers have given it all they can give to protect and to serve us, and when they have a catastrophic illness, we should not turn our backs on them. And whatever we can do to give them the income that their family needs, then we ought to do that. And what's being, what's happening here is that other officers put the time sick leave in the bank, as a vacation?
Most of it's vacation, sir.
Vacation in the bank, just for these particular reasons. And the council, 1993, was it?
Yes, sir.
Adopted the bank-type program for police officers only. Now, you're saying that they can draw on the bank after, when they get down to 50%, to make up to 100%?
Well, actually, as it stands right now, they have to exhaust the 50%.
I understand. And what I'm going to suggest as an amendment, that when they draw down 100% of the sick leave, and then they go to the 75% of the sick leave, we should match the 25% from the bank.
You have no argument from me, sir.
Okay, and when they get down to the 50% sick leave, we can match that with an addition of 25%, make it 100% from the bank. Because you have enough hours in the bank, is that not correct?
We have substantial hours, yes, 100,000 hours.
So you're not threatened?
No.
Okay. Well, Mr. President, members, I'd like to make that amendment. Do you understand that, Ms. Seal?
That'll change the ordinance, and I believe a new ordinance then will have to be presented.
Well, you don't have 12 votes here today, right now, anyway.
No, but then it'll, the new ordinance will be set, first reading again when it's presented.
Well, you don't mind waiting for that kind of a deal, do you?
That'd be fine.
All right, very good.
Okay, that's an amending motion by Mr. Holden. Chair recognizes Mr. Zine.
Thank you, President, colleagues. And, Mr. Holden, good questions on this issue. Mr. Lawler, Mr. Fugioke, does this also apply to firefighters, any other city employees, or strictly for police officers?
Strictly for police officers.
Has there ever been an issue, since we're going to amend this, to include firefighters, paramedics? Would it be?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Because I know that the, when this was brought to my attention, in this particular situation with this officer, and they've got this tremendous bank available, I thought, how many other public safety personnel would be impacted by this? Have we ever explored that possibility?
Right now, it is restricted to the police department, because it's police officers who are putting their unused time into this particular bank.
And do we have a provision for other public safety in the city? In other words, why was it restricted strictly for police officers?
No, fire department has their own, police has their own, civilians have their own.
The catastrophic leave?
Correct. Yes, what we're talking about today is just a policy that would amend the structure, the allocation structure for the program for police officers. But if you want us to look at changes for the other programs.
Well, I'm saying, if we're going to modify it, and if we're talking about modifying the ordinance, I think it would be appropriate to look at the other emergency personnel and other city employees, if we have that same condition, and we have a surplus of hours, and when they have some cancer or other catastrophic illness, that we should provide that, since it's not a negative on the taxpayers, and I'm just wondering if that'd be appropriate to pursue that, if we're going to change this ordinance, instead of piecemealing it, we come back with a full package, to say, for this particular situation, which was brought about, but the other situations that may be brought about in the future, instead of coming in after the fact, have it already in place.
We can do that.
Okay, I'll, go ahead.
I just have one comment about making it a full package. What would be ideal for this situation is that we at least get this ordinance through first, because the officer, right now, he's approaching his 50% time right now, he's used up his 75% time, he's using it currently, so, I would hate to delay that.
Well, I have no problem with that. I want this to go forward, and I support that, but I'm looking at the horizon, firefighters, paramedics, other civilian personnel who have some type of catastrophic illness, we should have the plan in place for them too, and not strictly for this particular situation, but extend it out, and if maybe we can, Mr. President, have a, have a report back to see, or send it to committee to see how we can modify that, so we include the city family, and they all get treated fairly in this arena.
Thank you. Before recognizing Ms. Siskowski, now, did you say it's okay to wait on this, per Mr. Holden's amending motion, and now you're telling Mr. Zine you don't want to wait on this, that we can come back and amend this thing later?
I would just have, I would just comment toward Mr. Zine when he mentioned about, when he said a package, I didn't want this to get confused with the police and the civilians, so we can get this done now. I agree wholeheartedly with.
But that still goes back to the question about Mr. Holden's amending motion. You're either okay to hold this up for some minor changes, or you're not. So I just want to get a clear answer.
Mr. President, could I make a suggestion, please?
Point of order. Mr. President, members, this is a simple amendment, could be back before us next week for the first reading. All you're doing is changing numbers.
I agree, Mr. Holden.
Mr. Zine's motion goes a little farther.
I understand. I'm just trying to respond to this gentleman's comment about moving this thing forward as quickly as possible, or a willingness to hold off for another week.
Well, a quick suggestion. We approve what's before you today, and so that, at the very least, he gets some immediate relief. We come back with the new ordinance that addresses Councilman Holden's suggestion, and the new ordinance will also be brought in to include other public safety, you know, positions, but we make sure that the relief goes to the officer immediately, at the proposed level today. And then, next week, we'll bring in a new ordinance for, consistent with Mr. Holden's motion, which would result in the officer getting an even higher benefit when the second motion comes.
Mr. Holden, is that okay? All right. That's all we needed, some clarification. Ms. Siskowski?
That's fine, that's all I want to clarify. Let's get this in, so that this particular employee can get relieved as immediately as possible, and then work on the other issues that Mr. Zine is talking about also, as quickly as possible, but not interrupt this.
Okay, and Ms. Siskowski is almost the final speaker. Mr. Zine?
Just follow up. Do we have to have him come back to committee, or how do we work that for the other?
This particular action, before us today, we'll proceed with the manner you requested, and, Mr. Holden, yes, we'll come back with, to committee with an amending ordinance form, and we'll come through the council accordingly.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Members to be heard, seeing none. We have a combined Holden-Zine amending motion. We'll consider that without objection, and we'll take up item 26 as amended. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved.
And that ordinance is over for second reading for, to February 18th.
Next item, please.
Item number 35 was called special for an amending motion. 35A has been distributed to the council members.
Okay, and I believe that's technical in nature. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we shall consider item 35 as amended. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number 37 called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. This item today, which deals with BTAC colleagues and sunsetting when it will cease to be in existence, is a healthy thing in terms of making sure that we get our work done. I also share, I know, with many of the council members that reform of our business I also share, I know, with many of the council members that reform of our business tax code is probably the most important thing we can do on our revenue side, but on our economic development of this city, it's one of the most substantial things that we can do in this city. We have currently scheduled, I know, an Economic Development Employment Committee. One of the items that was recommended by BTAC on single-category filing, and I think it's important that we move legislatively on many of the other proposals, obviously the holy grail being figuring out some way to get away from a gross receipts tax and move towards a net gains tax in this city. And clearly, there's been a lot of people who've worked on that in BTAC, and that has to be one of our top legislative priorities for this coming year. I would encourage colleagues to continue to try to find legislative ways for us to move on that business tax efforts. We will continue to do that in the Economic Development and Employment Committee in the meantime, also on finding strategic categories for industries we want to keep or attract in Los Angeles, attract to Los Angeles. And I think that this is, this is important, that we sunset it so that we know that our work has to be done by then, but we certainly shouldn't use it as a deadline, but merely our last possible date. And if we can do things earlier, that's really what the businesses of Los Angeles are not only demanding, but deserve. Thank you.
Ms. Grule.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also, I want to stand up with my colleague, Councilmember Garcetti, and I know Councilmember Padilla as well, who supports looking at our business tax reform. The BTAC has done an incredible job thus far in their activities, in their recommendations, that we are hoping will come forward to City Council as soon as possible. We need to make sure that Los Angeles is a business-friendly city, that it is a city where we can make it simpler for people to participate in the process. We hear so frequently and read frequently about businesses going to surrounding communities. We need to save those businesses for the city of Los Angeles and the BTAC and their hard work. These are individuals who have other jobs and businesses who have actually given of their time and energy to improve the way the city does business. And we've all been following in the last several weeks and months some of the issues where the city stumbled on that issue. And we need to bring back confidence that we are serious about business tax reform here in Los Angeles. So, I stand in support as well for the committee to continue, to continue to nudge, continue to be our conscience, and to work with them to successfully implement many of their recommendations with the mayor and the full city council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Grule, thank you. And it's very important, as we look at this whole issue of our Business Tax Advisory Committee and the work, to be able to move, to be able to take advantage of the unfortunate crisis where we are in the budget, to look at reforming taxes. Because everywhere I go, and the people who, we all talked about housing earlier, I just remember the housing developer this morning, he talked about taxes, 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 and how it impacts whether he builds in Seattle, San Antonio, or Los Angeles. So, I just wanted to thank all of those who've been very involved in the charge to deal with business tax reform and to move ahead in this area of reinstating, re-designating, working ahead on the issues of business tax reform, which is so key and important. And I think we've got to do it. It's a tough time. You've got to do it now. I know now, if not now, when? If not when? You know that story. Anyway, I thank you, and I appreciate your leadership, Mr. President, on this tax reform as we look at the situation through all the business of the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number forty-two called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. On this item, College Awareness Month, Assemblymember Fran Pavley and members of my staff and her staff and Senator Celia Kew were at Taft High School two weeks ago Saturday promoting this. And I just want to remind our viewers, listeners, that if you have a student who looks, wants to go to college, Cal grants are available, and the applications must be received by March third. And there was a program where fifty schools in L.A., Unified, were involved in this project. And in the San Fernando Valley, the response was not that great, but there was money there, millions of dollars, but the deadline is March third. So, anyone interested in leaving high school and pursuing further education, those grants are available. Again, contact the counselor at the local high school, and millions of dollars available to the Cal Grant Program. Thank you.
Let me recognize Mr. Labange.
I just wanted to stand and salute Mr. Zine, and I wanted to stand because college is so important, and to help young people find out how to get there. I just, this week, Mr. Garcetti and I honored Los Angeles City College on Sunday evening at a dinner at Tay's Restaurant on Sunset Boulevard with the Highland Democratic Club. And it was very nice to honor City College, because I reminisced about what college meant to me in getting to step up. And I think that awareness program that, and I know the programs that our mayor has on college scholarships, all of this is extremely important. So, all of us should take heed to this College Awareness Month and spread the word, whatever the college is, whether it's a university as great as USC, or UCLA, or as impactful as Pomona, or Occidental, or great community colleges like Harbor, City, or Southwest, or East L.A., all of Valley, Pierce, all of them are extremely important. Get to step up. So, I just want to encourage everybody and encourage our departments to make sure they inform their employees, they're part of the College Awareness Month, and take advantage of college. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. This matter is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That matter is approved. Next item, Madam President. Item number five is still on the desk. This is a street lighting, excuse me, district in council, District One. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I believe we're in a position where we can move forward. I know we're having this discussion with the individual who did step up. He is a property owner. He does want to improve his lights. Is anyone on staff here to answer a couple of questions?
Is there anyone from the Bureau of Street Lighting?
Sir? And we can continue till tomorrow?
Mr. Reyes, this will be in again on March fourth for the ordinance and the hearing, so I don't know if you want to continue it to tomorrow and then hear it again on the fourth? So, this was just an opening of a protest hearing? Yes. So, we'll come back on March fourth for the continuation of the hearing and the approval and assessment, so we can have street lighting there at that time?
We can do it tomorrow, though.
Yeah, okay. You want to continue this until tomorrow?
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
That will be the order. There is special one, Madam President, on the desk. It's an item not on council's agenda, and it's been presented by Councilmember Padilla, seconded by Councilmember Grule, and the city attorney will explain the need to make the findings.
Thank you. I read into the record the findings for the council to consider. On February tenth, two thousand and three, the rental units of eighteen families were destroyed by fire at nine zero one zero Cedros Avenue. The Housing Department has determined the tenants are eligible to receive calamity-based displaced tenant relocation assistance funds pursuant to the government code. Council must first determine whether there is a need to take immediate action, and that the need for action came to the attention of council after the posting of today's agenda. If such a finding is made, the department requests that the council authorize the disbursement of such funds as set forth in the substantive motion.
All right, members. We've heard the city attorney enunciate the findings. If there's no question on the findings, open the roll so we can take action on the matter. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right. That matter is properly before us. Let me recognize Councilmember Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, I stepped down to speak on this special one, first of all, to ask for your support, but second, to explain exactly what this incident was. As many of you awoke yesterday morning, and as we were watching the news, getting ready for work, or listening to news radio on the drive-in, you probably heard or saw a lot of media coverage about an apartment fire, originally reported in the Mission Hills area, it actually turned out to be in the Panorama City area. And so, I was out there on the scene, and wanted to call this matter special to highlight the situation, and really thank the Los Angeles Fire Department for a tremendous response, for a tremendous job in putting out this fire and minimizing damage both to the building and to families, and also to thank the American Red Cross for responding to the scene and for their ongoing efforts to try to help these families, these displaced families get back on their feet. Of particular note, this is a building that, my estimate is anywhere between fifty and sixty units, twenty-one of which are now gone. Twenty-one units gone, and more than twenty-one families displaced. Within about twenty, twenty-five minutes, there were a hundred firefighters on the scene. A hundred and thirty firefighters fighting this fire within half an hour, and within half an hour, that fire was not only contained, but it was out. And according to the captain on the scene, it is a miracle that nobody died in this fire. We did have about half a dozen injuries, but this was the incident that we all heard about yesterday, so you understand the correlation between the incident yesterday and our urgent need to act to help these twenty-one families that have been displaced, and an opportunity to commend the Los Angeles Fire Department for a job very well done. I ask for your support.
We've heard, we have the recommendation before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That matter is approved. Forthwith on that. Next item, Madam President. This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda. All right. We have a few public comment speaker cards that were submitted. Let me first call Nigel Cox. Is Nigel Cox present? Joan Rivard, Ruth Sarnoff, and Bill Murray. Okay. It looks like Mr. Murray is present. Please come forward and speak.
Thank you, Madam President. My name is Bill Murray. I'm here representing the Los Angeles Community Policing Group at lacp.org. Many of you know who I am. You'll know that what we cover in, at lacp.org is issues that are pertinent to the Los Angeles Police Department, but also the general issues involving gangs, domestic violence, homeless and mentally ill people, and community involvement in general and government. We have a big portion of what we have committed to regarding the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, the neighborhood council system. I rise, though, to speak about the topic that I just mentioned that is on everyone's agenda, and that's the gang situation. A hundred thousand dollars was today allocated towards a gang program that's designed for prevention and intervention, and that's excellent. It's a drop in the bucket for what I believe we need in Los Angeles. Because we do tend to deal with the suppression arm of things, and we're doing a little better with that now, and I'm happy to report that Chief Bratton's system is, looks like one that will work. It will integrate different agencies, including federal, state, and local agencies, and it'll actually get people talking to each other in the same room, which is brand-new for us. However, the real solution to the problem, I believe, is a full press court with a vision that's much longer, like a ten-year plan. And this needs to be coordinated, and I would ask the city council, the mayor, and the LAPD to take leading roles in this, because we, rather than a little bit here and a little bit there, we need an overview. There are other districts besides Harbor, obviously, there's the, there's a couple in the valley that are very badly in need of gang intervention and prevention programs, also South Central, a couple of divisions down there, the Boyle Heights area, the Lincoln Heights area. I could go on and on. There are many of them. But there is no coordination of any of this. And that's why I asked, that's why I wanted to make a public comment. I really think that that is what makes a difference, because without a ten-year plan, without a vision that includes a ten-year plan, today's five-year-old is fifteen-year-olds with a gun on the street. And the children who are now coming into the gangs, they're in a situation where they are, they're generations old, they have no other alternatives. And we need a coordinated effort that shows them that, you know, it's also cool to become an explorer, or it's also cool to pursue an art career, or it's also cool to, whatever. And there is no coordinated effort, is the point I want to make today. And I call on the city council to take a lead, along with the mayor, and the police department. It's very important, community policing programs all over the world show this. Without the police taking a leading role, they don't have to be the ones that actually implement the process, but they must partner with it very strongly. It will, it will not succeed. That's what community policing is about. So, I encourage, I'm very grateful that you've done this for Harbor Division. I think there are several other divisions that deserve at least similar amounts of attention. But overall, we need to, we need to be looking this from a ten-year view. The intervention and the prevention arms are, are what's going to get us out of the gang problem that we have, not just the suppression. The suppression will bring the crime statistics down for today, perhaps, but they will not resolve the problem, and that is that children need other choices. And that's, that starts with the five-year-old, right through the teenager. Thank you very much for your time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Whether anyone-
I'm Ruth Sarnoff. I came today with a message in support of the Garcetti resolution that I think is one of the resolutions under consideration, and I do have handouts. The thousands of sick Gulf War veterans, a sickness passed on in birth defects to their children, and the many sick, mentally ill, and homeless veterans right here in our city should have taught us one thing, that the casualties of war extend beyond our battlefield losses. After the first Gulf War, the water, garbage, sewage, and electrical systems for millions of Iraqis were no more. As people who deal every day with the needs of millions of Los Angeles residents, I ask you, even with our vast resources, what would life be like for us if we lost even one of those systems in our city? Nothing about war is cheap. There is loss of life, degradation of the environment, destruction of farmland, the spread of disease, the creation of orphans and refugees. Many of the weapons used in the Gulf War were warheads and other military equipment hardened with highly poisonous depleted uranium associated with Gulf War syndrome. Those weapons were the great success story of the war, piercing enemy tanks like they were made of butter. They were not, however, a great success story for our soldiers who scouted the burnt-out, irradiated tanks and were downwind from the fighting, yet never warmed, nor for the Iraqis still suffering from the effects of a radiated landscape. And those smart bombs, only after the war did we learn, only six percent of the bombs dropped were smart bombs. The others, unfortunately, were dumb ones. And the babies supposedly thrown out of incubators by Iraqi soldiers and then bayoneted, that story was exposed on Sixty Minutes to have been a totally false, invented story. The fifteen-year-old girl weeping before cameras was, in fact, the daughter of the ambassador of the U.S. from Kuwait. On Sixty Minutes, she recanted publicly to the world it was a hoax. Like the oft-repeated footage of the smart bombs, it's not hard to believe the unbelievable when the drums of war become strong. And war is not cheap for even the victors. That part of every war, of every budget which pays in some way for past, present, and future wars, robbing local and state as well as federal budgets, were it possible to accurately tally, would far exceed the acknowledged costs of war already in the trillions. And just as war begets war, successful solutions without war will encourage more aggressive seeking of peaceful solutions. I urge you to join the great cities of the world in helping to prevent a preventable war, and to support the efforts of the United Nations for a peaceful resolution of the Iraqi crisis. I urge you to join with the Pope, with Nelson Mandela, with the National AFL-CIO, the National Federations of British and other European Unions, and the thousands of prominent individuals, religious organizations, and nonprofits here and abroad saying no to war. No war in Iraq. It's not too late to turn around the worst manifestation of our destructive behaviors as a species, war. A first step toward peace is already being taken by people throughout the world. Can you ever remember a time before when people throughout the world, in cities large and small, rallied in such numbers to prevent a war? This can become the much-heralded century of peace, a new day where humanity uses its best creative thinking to rise above the barbarism of war. It will, however, require new thinking at every level. I urge members of the city council of the city of Los Angeles to support the original resolution. Tweak it if you must, but please don't let this opportunity pass to send a clear peace message to the White House that U.S. bombing of Iraqi cities and first-strike use of nuclear weapons are not acceptable. And I'd like to quote, to, to close with a quote. Beware the leader who bangs the drums of war in order to whip the- Beware the leader who bangs the drums of war in order to whip the citizenry into a patriotic fervor, for patriotism is indeed a double-edged sword. It both emboldens the blood, just as it narrows the mind. And when the drums of war have reached a fever pitch, and the blood boils with hate, and the mind has closed, the leader will have no need in seizing the rights of the citizenry. Rather, the citizenry infused with fear and blinded by patriotism will offer up all of their rights unto the leader, and gladly so. How do I know? For this is what I have done, and I am Caesar, Julius Caesar. And I thank you for your time, and I would appreciate someone getting the handouts to members of the-
The sergeant.
Council and others.
Thank you, Ms. Sarnoff. The sergeant in arms is coming to pick those up.
I also have, I also have two tapes on depleted uranium and on the aftermath of the Iraqi war, which I would be happy to share with any members of the council who would wish to see them.
Let the sergeant take those, and we'll make them available. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our public comment period. Madam Clerk, what else is before us? Council has motions for posting and referral. They are posted and referred. And that clears the desk, Madam President. All right. Are there any announcements? Any adjourned motions? Members of the council, any adjourned motions? Seeing none? Oh, we do have some. All right, please stand, everyone.
Mr. President, members, just said to announce this young man, James Edward Sanders III. Just 10 years old and in the fifth grade at 68th Street School. His body was found on Monday, February 3rd, in a pool at Fremont High School. The victim was in apparent drowning. Police are continuing to investigate the circumstances around James' death. The pool office has been vandalized. School friends and classmates will remember James as a spirited and lively youngster, remembering by everyone who met him. James lived with his grandmother, who was unable to pay for the funeral. McCormick Moctery in Inglewood stepped in and has generously donated its services and a casket. His teacher, Earl Hunter, has worked tirelessly to raise funds for the burial, and we made a contribution. The funeral services will take place February 12th at McCormick Moctery at 635 South Prairie Prairie. Burial will follow at Inglewood Park Cemetery. I just might add that there was a guy named Supervisor Kenneth Hahn, who put pools in the community where they were never had them before. He was chairman of the Recreation and Park Committee as a member of the Los Angeles City's Council. This is worth noting. And when they made a request for swimming pools elsewhere, they needed his signature, as he told the story, and, but they would never give one to him. So when they stacked up where they were not being built, they asked Supervisor Hahn, Councilman Hahn, "Where are those swimming pool requests?" He said, "When you approve one for me, then I'll sign off on the others." These people have been denied swimming, and unfortunately, this accident occurred. At one point in time, when I worked for him, there was a drowning in a swimming pool such as this, and the stripes in the pool shielded the kid's body, and he could not be identified. And he corrected that problem. So as we go on in life as elected officials, there are things that will be brought to your attention that you will have the power and the ability to correct. We haven't solved all the problems, but I'm sure you will have your problems of your own and continue to solve them. This young man unfortunately died early at the age of 10, and we adjourned his memory. Thank you for allowing me to make those comments.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Any other tributes? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you. Counsel is adjourned.